Hello, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Palo Alto City Council Candidate Forum, brought to you by SV at Home, CA YMB, and Silicon Valley Community Foundation. I'm Carly With, City Hall Reporter for San Jose Spotlight and this evening's moderator. If you have any questions, please submit them using the Q and A feature. If we have time, we will address them at the end. We will hear from nine of the 10 city council candidates. Lydia Koo declined an invitation to participate. The candidates will be heard in two groups. Group one, coming before you shortly, will include Carrie Templeton, Greer Stone, Stephen Lee, and Rebecca Eisenberg. Group two, which includes Raven Malone, Patrick Burke, Greg Tanaka, Ed Lowing, Ajit Varma, will answer questions starting at 7:00 PM. Each candidate will be asked four questions, and we'll have two minutes to respond per question. As a courtesy, please remember to mute yourself if you're not speaking. The first question, we're going to jump right in, is for Carrie Templeton. Palo Alto hasn't approved a new apartment building since January 2019, which was also the first affordable housing development approved in seven years. The city is projected to have a requirement under the regional housing needs allocation process to plan for over 10,000 new homes in the next eight-year cycle. What ideas do you have to add thousands of new homes to Palo Alto? What sites offer new opportunities for housing production?
Thank you, I was just writing down the question. Well, the PTC did approve or recommend to city council the approval of a new apartment building that includes affordable units in August, so I'm hopeful that the council will approve that as well. There are a lot of places and ways we can get the housing. Our current zoning isn't as supportive of those ways, but let's start with what we do have. So, we have ADUs and JADUs approved throughout the city, and this is a way to have three housing units, like separate homes, on existing site without rezoning it. So that's a really interesting way to do it. There are some complications with that. It's very expensive for the property owner to put in an ADU, and they're also very small. So I believe they're somewhere between 800 and 1,200, depending on the number of bedrooms. So then we also have setback requirements, which is prohibitive as well. So I don't know that that's going to get us where we need to go for thousands. We've had hundreds, more like, over the past few years. So other places we need to look are near transit corridors and near in commercial zone areas. That's where we got this one proposal that we're excited about. It's going before council on San Antonio Road. It's a formerly commercial space, and it is now going to be used for housing. So we wanted to expand that. We also, in addition to recommending that development, we also recommended that we expand the idea of zoning for those commercial spaces nearby to also be used for housing if needed. So we'll see how that comes. I guess that's it for my time. Thank you, those are some ideas to start with.
Thank you, next up, we have Greer Stone.
Yeah, thank you Carly for the question. Thank you for everybody for being here tonight on a Thursday evening to listen to us talk about housing. I'm excited for the conversation. I agree with Carrie, there's a lot of places in the city that we can do to be able to increase our housing, our housing supply and housing production. Looking at transit hubs, looking at rezoning, the Stanford Research Park, there is a lot of territory there that we can be able to, that we can be able to rezone, to be able to create housing. And the nice thing about that housing as well is there's already a pretty good transit system within place nearby, so it is like a good area for that type of housing to be. North Ventura currently, right now, we're working on the NV cap to find ways to be able to increase the housing supply there. I really hope that we go with a strong focus on housing over commercial growth in that neighborhood. Along El Camino and our commercial cores as well can definitely be redeveloped to have an increased focus on housing and mixed developments. That way, we can make sure that we have housing and community service type of retail there as well. The two ADUs per home will help, but one of the problems is there is no requirement that ADUs be actually used for housing. A lot of people use that for office space, so maybe we can explore options for that. And then one of my, one of the things I would really like to see us do, because Palo Alto has historically been very poor at actually creating low-income housing, and we do really badly when it comes to meeting our low-income housing for our regional housing needs allocation. For example, in 2018, Palo Alto only met 6% of our very low-income regional housing needs allocation. So I'd be interested in exploring a policy that would, that would really kind of require our new housing production to be tied to those numbers to make sure that we really are focusing on the type of housing that Palo Alto desperately needs, which is that missing middle housing, as well as the low-income housing as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Lee.
Yeah, thank you so much for the question. You know, as I tell everyone on these town halls, it's all about housing, housing, housing. Housing is so intrinsically to many of the issues we care about as a community. So if we want to address climate change, reduce traffic, address wage war and economic inequality, as well as a whole host of other issues, then we need to get serious about housing. I agree with my colleague Carrie that we need to enable dense housing near transit quarters. I believe we should be rezoning office space in the research park for housing. We certainly need to do all of those things. I serve on or doesn't get its fair share of VTA routes is because our city hasn't done its fair share of building the density we need to actually support and make economical mass transit. So we need to do our part to do more density. In addition to, we do some of the pressure of building really tall buildings in these transit quarters. We need to get rid of exclusionary zoning and enable duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes in our single-family neighborhoods. I know a lot of people in our community are afraid about this change, but I think there's a way to do it in a way that blends, blends in quite well with the existing neighborhood. And to do so, that balances how we build the housing, not just along transit, but dispersing it within our neighborhoods in a way that blends in very well. I also want to work with our faith-based communities and other governments who own a lot of property as well. You know, land acquisition is a huge cost of building housing. So we need to build housing at Coverley, teacher housing and senior housing, but we also need to look towards our faith-based communities who are very interested in redeveloping a lot of their land holdings for affordable housing. So we need to step up as a community and not only enable them to do it, but really do the heavy lifting in terms of finding a way to make it pencil out financially and just doing all the hard works if they're interested in developing their land for affordable housing. So I'll leave it at that, but you know, we need to get serious about housing because it's impacting our community in so many different ways.
Thanks, Stephen. Now onto Rebecca Eisenberg.
Hi, so as we know, there are three different types of below-market housing. There's moderate, low, and very low. With very low, Palo Alto has actually permitted only 43 units in the past eight years, which is approximately 6% of our current requirement of RENA of 700 units with one year to go. We need to get this done. Yes, we need to rezone, I think, all parcels to default to housing, which we can do with just one ordinance, but our city councils haven't done that yet. But there are three locations that are currently zoned for housing that aren't being used for housing. One of them is North Ventura, and the North Ventura's community has proposed this fantastic option, Alternative M, which actually plans for 700 units of housing, which I support. Additionally, there's Coverley. We need to transfer ownership to the city in order to get that done, but from my conversations with school board members, that would be okay with them as long as we protect their need to have a school, which we can do. And then third, if Castilea decides that it has outgrown its base, they actually sit on 50 lots of RH1 housing. We also have housing that's just open in our communities, like Old Palo Alto, where about almost half of all the houses are ghost houses. We can enforce that and, and actually require that they be used for housing use. As to funding, there's been tons of funding available. The state actually gave away $600 million last month for affordable housing. Mountain View received almost 13 million, Santa Clara received 40 million, San Francisco 45, and even Fresno received approximately 15 million. Palo Alto receives zero because we didn't apply. We need to take advantage of the money that's available. We also need to talk about emergency tax measures that will tax only profitable big companies. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Rebecca. Next question, we're going to also start with you, Rebecca. 87% of Palo Alto's residential land is zoned exclusively for single-family homes. Research from UC Berkeley has found high levels of restrictive zoning like this to be associated with greater segregation. Do you support allowing missing-middle multifamily housing in single-family zone neighborhoods?
Well, yes, and I actually support single-family homes, not just for missing middle, which is most considered that moderate, but also for low and for very low. Single-family homes are not the problem here. What is the problem are usually zone sizes, you know, minimum lot sizes, which are too large. If we allowed residents to subdivide their lots, and if we allowed subdivision of more than two of these huge lots, like an acre large in our community, we can actually enable a lot more housing while letting people have their single-family homes, just more on a lot. Additionally, we need another exclusionary measure is the problem that we have these very low height limits. The city council recently, over the past several years, not just this city council, but previous city councils have paid millions of dollars of taxpayer money to hire consultants to tell us what is getting in the way of affordable housing. These consultants have come back with one clear answer above more than others. Well, two, one is these height limits. If we allow buildings to be taller, just like commercial buildings are taller, you know, among El Camino and in other busier thoroughfares, we can enable a lot more housing. We have to let go of these height limits. Middlefield doesn't need a two-story height limit. Additionally, they say that the parking requirements are getting in the way. I understand that in the absence of a robust system of public transportation, like we're supposed to have in the form of electric shuttles and ties to our regional transit, you know, people are going to need their cars. That's why we need to prioritize and invest in public transit for this. A third problem actually is the fact that many places that we like to create housing has toxic waste underneath, such as unfortunately Stanford Research Park, home to one of the biggest superfund sites in the country. Thank you.
Carrie Templeton.
So the question is, do we support missing-middle housing in our one, currently our one-zone neighborhoods? I mean, with 87% of the city zoned as our one, that has to be something that we consider. And, you know, I understand that some people get frustrated at that language, but to clear it up, ADUs and JADUs are already allowed in those places. So whether, you know, we want to restrict it to those types of housing or we want to allow multifamily zoning there, you know, that's, it's really semantics. I think the, the idea of, of having different types of housing available is not a problem. At least in my neighborhood, I live in Barron Park, and we've got a, you know, three blocks away, we've got high-rise apartment building. One block behind me, we've got a low-rise apartment building. Across the street from it is townhomes. We also have people with ADUs. We have all types of housing in this neighborhood, and it's absolutely wonderful. The one thing I will say has been a frustration is we're also two blocks away from Maybelle, which was an opportunity to have affordable senior housing in our R1 neighborhood, and that was unfortunately not allowed by the city. So I think that was a mistake, and I hope that we can find ways to help people understand what the different zoning types mean. They're really just different tools in our toolkit so that we can find the right solution for the right space and get the housing that is needed desperately in our city built without being too disruptive to our communities. So I'm, the answer is yes, I would be supportive of finding ways to, to get more housing even in our R1 neighborhoods. Thank you.
Clear.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Right, yeah, I think, I think one of the, we, we need to create this, we need to create the missing-middle housing for sure. But one of the things that I get concerned about when candidates are only really talking about upzoning, is that upzoning doesn't address the systemic inequities in our affordable housing crisis. Upzoning, upzoning is just a blunt tool. I mean, all, all zoning is, is saying where you can build something and how big you can build something, but it doesn't actually create affordable housing. You know, Joe Semidion, on Tuesday night at the Board of Supervisors meeting, they, they actually voted to, to require inclusionary zoning for new housing and unincorporated lands in the county of Santa Clara. And, and Joe Semidion even said in that, in that meeting, you know, it's clear that the market is not creating affordable housing in Santa Clara County. So when we're just talking about allowing upzoning or ending R1 zoning, all that's going to do is create more market-rate housing in Palo Alto. Sure, it'll be a little smaller, sure, it might be a little cheaper than your market-rate housing in Palo Alto, but still is not going to create the type of housing that's going to be for, like, for my wife and I. Both my wife and I are teachers. We rent a small one-bedroom apartment in Palo Alto. We struggle to get by every day. And I know if you create four, four small housing in the middle of Palo Alto in what was traditionally an R1 zoning, that's not going to all of a sudden make that housing more affordable. So what do we need to do? We really need to focus our housing policies and, and allow government to be able to create opportunities for us to actually build that type of housing. So looking at additional income sources to be able to do that, such as requiring a business tax to be able to raise funds, to be able to build actual affordable housing and that missing-middle housing. We also need to look at things like a vacancy tax, where we can actually disincentivize people to purchase homes merely as an investment tool and actually use that fund so we can really start creating housing. And finally, increase our inclusionary zoning rate and enact the Palmer fix so we can require that with rental housing as well.
Thank you, Stephen Lee.
I appreciate the question. You know, as someone who's served as a human relations commissioner in Palo Alto for the last three years, and I've actually served on three human relations commissions in three different communities. I have been working on addressing the racial and economic inequalities in our community. And one of the reasons why I'm running for council is because housing is so important to that goal. And my power as a commissioner was very limited. It had nothing to do with housing. But in order to address those issues, we need to get serious about housing. And I think we need to let council members who understand and acknowledge the history, the tragic history surrounding our housing policy. You know, exclusionary zoning, to be very honest, and we need to confront this history head-on, is a successor to redlining and to overt forms of housing discrimination. We need to look at the historical motivations behind single-family zoning and acknowledge that it continues to impact and segregate our community both racially and economically. I think there's a way to enable duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes, and to enable them to blend quite well into our neighborhood. You know, as Greer mentioned, it may, it could be a blunt instrument, but if we are very deliberate and very careful about how we do it, I think it can be actually a more targeted tool. And, you know, I'm going to commit myself to working with all of our neighborhoods to design policies that enable us to not only get rid of exclusionary zoning, but do it in a way that works well with our neighborhoods. You know, and this is one of the reasons why I've been endorsed by many of the groups in our community who care about the housing crisis, whether it's the County Democratic Party or nine different democratic groups or Peninsula for Everyone, or the Legal Conservation Verderds, or Carbon Free Palo Alto. I think we need council members who, who are going to acknowledge that single-family zoning is just not working, and we need to do more to fix that. So yes, absolutely, I support multifamily housing in neighborhoods. And I will say that all of the studies out there suggest that building multifamily housing in neighborhoods does not negatively impact the value of single-family homes. So people should not be worried about that at all, because the studies suggest that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next question will go to Greer. North Ventura was a formerly redlined community that saw significant gentrification in subsequent decades. The neighborhood now only has 3% black residents and a median home value of $2.4 million. What is your vision for redevelopment of the North Ventura area?
Yeah, great question. Now, my, my vision for the redevelopment of North Ventura is a, is a housing community with the type of community-serving businesses and retail and activities and parkland that is going to be able to make that a thriving community. Nor, I mean, Palo Alto, Palo Alto has a, a parks-per-resident ratio of four acres per, per 1,000 residents, but we've fallen very below that. I think we're 88 acres behind that, and North Ventura has been one of those neighborhoods that has been traditionally, historically behind on that. So this is one of those areas where I think it's just so ripe for being able to create lots of housing. Rebecca talked about that Alternative M plan that was really resident-driven and community-driven. I, I agree with her, that's the type of, those are the type of solutions that we really want to create, having solutions that has the community's input and collaboration and finding ways that we're going to actually be able to really promote housing over office growth. Because that's, I think, one of the big problems for the housing prices in Palo Alto. We've had city policies, really since the 1970s and 80s, that have promoted job growth over housing growth. And now we have one of the worst jobs housing imbalances in the, in the country. We really need to start correcting that. And, and North Ventura is going to be one of the places where we can really be focused, having a strong focus on, on housing and definitely a mixed source of housing within that community to make sure that we are really focusing on being able to create the type of housing so that teachers and nurses and public safety workers and other, and other community workers who serve our community can be able to live there, create several op, create more opportunities for low-income residents within that community as well to be able to promote the diversity that we, that used to exist there in North Ventura. I'm the vice chair of the Santa Clara County Human Rights Commission. I'm the former chair of the Palo Alto Human Relations Commission. So these issues of social justice and equity and inclusion in our community is so important to me. Thank you.
Thank you, let's hear from Stephen.
Yeah, North Ventura presents us with sort of a once-in-a-generation opportunity to genuinely get serious about our housing obligations, to show the region and the state and our own community that we are serious about tackling this problem head-on. It's an opportunity for us to really chart our own destiny and to create a, a community, a vibrant community that meets all of our needs, and to do it in our own way, as opposed to, you know, if we don't build serious housing here, then it's unfortunately going to lead to the state stepping in and really dictating how, where, and how much housing we, we do. So this is really an opportunity for us to be in control of our own destiny and to prove people wrong that Palo Alto can get serious about housing. You know, I envision a dynamic, dense, and balanced community with a variety of housing types. And I think we need both market rate and affordable. You know, I don't question Greer's intentions here at all. I definitely do think we need a lot of affordable housing. We need to ensure that people of different wage war and economic backgrounds can afford to live here. But we have a three-to-one jobs-housing imbalance, and that includes people who would ordinarily be in market-rate housing. So if we wanted to reduce the carbon emissions generated from, from market-rate dwellers commuting from further away, we need to build market-rate housing. So we, it's not an either-or in my book. I think we need both to, to address, you know, all of the jobs that we created here. And I think market-rate housing actually helps enable and pencil out some of the affordable housing that we need to, need to build. Um, you know, and this, this particular neighborhood is very close to Caltrain and next to El Camino. So it's an opportunity to really leverage the current transit options there as well as build the density we need to improve mass transit along that corridor. So it presents us with a unique opportunity, but we actually need to get serious about it and build significant housing there in a way that, that fits with, with our community.
Carrie.
Thank you so much, and thank you for including this question. I'm not, I'm not sure if everyone knows, but that's the, Ventura is the first neighborhood that I lived in, in Palo Alto. I had both my kids there, and, yeah, we really loved it. It was beautiful, it was a modest neighborhood. I would, I would say kind of a working-class, single-family homes, apartments, and multiplex-mixed. And it was a great place to, to live. And we chose it because we had just moved back from Germany. And, but we had grown up in the deep south, and we were very attracted by the diversity and the modesty of that neighborhood. So we were really, really lucky to live there. And that's why I wanted to get involved in the North Ventura Coordinated Area Plan. I applied to that and was appointed and stayed on until I joined the PTC. And we didn't need two PTC reps on there, we already had Commissioner Suma. So anyway, um, so it's a, it's a really important project. And I think there's a temptation in Palo Alto to say, oh my God, it's 60 acres, let's put all the housing we need there. And I think that would do a disservice to the Ventura neighborhood. You know, it has an important part to play in building housing. We definitely want to build housing there and lots of it. But I don't think we want to build only there. And so I just want to say that just on behalf of the Venturaans, like, there's plenty of places that we can also build housing. And we also need to make sure that we take care of this neighborhood as well as we take care of other neighborhoods in the city, right? Barron Park, Crescent Park, Midtown, I'll have a lot of attention. And when things aren't going well there, the city responds. So we want to make sure that as we expand Ventura, we also expand the services and take really good care of the people, the park, the streets, and the safety in that neighborhood as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca.
So yes, I support Alternative M 100%, and here's some of the reasons why. I love it because it preserves the existing stock of housing in North Ventura. It protects tenants and allows tenants to stay in the neighborhood rather than displacing them. It focuses on adding 770 new homes while preserving all the existing homes. It prioritizes low-income housing over market-rate housing in recognition that everyone benefits when we provide housing for our low-wage workers. It recognizes the huge negative impact of office development on the community as opposed to the huge positive impact of housing production to the community. There's been a persistent false belief that office production has the same, has a positive impact like housing does. It doesn't. It relies zero, the Alternative M relies zero on commercial developers, debunking another false myth that we need commercial development, developers to have affordable housing. We don't. It, Alternative M relies zero on commercial developers. Instead, it relies on funding from a business tax and from lease-backed bonds, muni-bonds. Lease-backed muni-bonds are one of the many available financing options available for cities with such a great credit record like ours. With that money, we also can, Alternative M proposes that we acquire the land owned by Sobrato, because he doesn't want to use it for residential, how it's zoned anyway, and acquire as much of the land near the beautiful, will-be-beautiful creek as well. It relies, it relies on also converting office buildings to residential, which we can do. And it preserves a historic building, honoring its past and strengthening local pride on behalf of this. It's a great plan.
Thank you, we're moving on to our final question, starting with Greer. Palo Alto has experienced substantial losses in residential housing stock. The hotel president was converted from apartments back into hotels and small multifamily housing, duplexes, triplexes, and has been demolished to build more expensive homes at lower densities. What policies would you support to preserve existing multifamily housing that is relatively affordable?
Great final question, thank you. And this is one of the, the key issues within my platform. You know, we know the three Ps, of course, and one of those is preserving existing housing, and, and that's key to my, to my housing policy. Within my first six months, I would be sure to, to create a colleague's memo advocating for a no-net-loss housing policy within the city of Palo Alto, which would, which would essentially prohibit developers from being able to destroy housing if they are not going to replace that housing with the same amount or a greater amount of housing. Especially if that housing that is going to be destroyed is below-market-rate housing. We need to have a series of protections to make sure that we are not then displacing the tenants that are currently there. So some of the ways in which we could do that is by having a right of first return to make sure that those residents are going to have the, have the right to be able to turn down that, the lease when it, when it's finally constructed. They should also be provided with, with rental assistance while they are being displaced, while that new, while the new housing is, is being built, as well as moving expenses, et cetera. We also should look at best practices from around the country, which I'm a big believer in, and, and some things that, that some communities are, are doing. And and some things that that some communities are are doing is it's making sure that when we have new housing being created, we are actually that they are requiring those developers to require a certain percentage of that be first offered to residents in the neighborhoods because we're seeing in places like Portland and Seattle mass displacement from those communities, especially in those neighborhoods that are being upzoned. And so these are some of the protections that those communities are offering to make sure that they are not seeing that type of displacement that we've seen here. That loss of the president's hotel was a real shame for us, especially for a council that says that housing is a priority. I spoke up at that council meeting urging the council to not allow that loss of the housing. We need council members who are always going to put housing first, especially affordable housing. Thank you.
Carrie.
Thank you very much. I do like the idea and support making sure that any improvements, quote unquote, that displace residents of affordable housing also plan to have them back. I think it's, it's really a huge shame to see these evictions happening, especially in affordable housing for elderly folks and our seniors that they they can't, they don't have anywhere else to go and they get a fee and then they're on their way. Meanwhile, the property is is improved and and repopulated at a greater expense that they affordable folks wouldn't be able to go back. That is something that we can control at the local level and we should do it. This is another of our various loopholes that we need to close up. And I think it is a shame that the city council hasn't done more to close up loopholes in general. Not just this housing one, but I'm thinking also about the curfew and things like that. It's also important that we have places that people can go to if they need to be moved, if they need to move out of their current home and they can have another home to go to that's affordable. And right now our affordable housing waitlist is years and years long, if not decade. It's, it's a problem and it seems to be a persistent problem because we are unfortunately just obstructing any kind of housing at all. And so there's, there's a bit of a scarcity issue. So I think that the things we need to do is have policies for property owners that want to take actions on their properties that would cause evictions to also take responsibility for offering the the property back. We also need to make sure that we're building more affordable housing. And the way that's currently funded also requires market rate housing as well.
Thank you, Rebecca.
So to clarify, Palo Alto already has a great set of laws that preserve housing. We actually have in our code a prohibition against taking homes off the market. We don't enforce that. Additionally, with regard to the hotel president, the owners of that building actually were legally required to relet those units to the residents. And they were required to relet them at the same price of rent that these residents had paid. That didn't happen because of a lack of justice and following the laws and fear due to a lawsuit that pretty much every lawyer like myself knew was going to fail because there was no precedent for that lawsuit. So, and that was the Ellis Act, by the way. What this is one reason I've been extremely upset that our city council, this one and previous city councils have engaged in a purposeful action of defunding our Office of Inspections and Enforcement over the past decades. Maybe they did that caving to commercial developer pressure because commercial developers save money when they don't have enforcement. We need to have enforcement to preserve these homes and we need to preserve what small amount of affordable housing we have here. I will stand up to these interests. I have thirty years of experience working as a lawyer. I have negotiated with billionaires and won. I worked at, I was the first lawyer at Trulia and Reddit and the second lawyer at PayPal. Billionaires and big commercial developers and venture capitalists don't scare me. I know how to work with them. That's what we need. We need, we need a city council with a change of vision, courage and integrity. And that's how we'll preserve these homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to some rapid fire questions.
I think you, I think you forgot me.
I'm so sorry, Stephen. My apologies. Please.
Yeah, on this topic, I agree with Rebecca quite a bit on this. The hotel president was a tragedy. You know, as a Duke educated lawyer, I strongly disagreed with our city attorney's legal analysis of the situation. As does Rebecca, who's a Harvard educated lawyer. She's a bit smarter than I am. And she actually wrote a very long, very thorough, very insightful brief of sorts about exactly, you know, what the legal landscape on this was. And I think it speaks to a larger issue. We have a council that is simply too deferential to our staff. A council that has advocated a lot of its responsibility in terms of setting the direction of our council and our community to staff. So I think we need to elect more lawyers. We need challenge their assumptions and conclusions when they don't add up or when they're not in the best interest of our community. So hotel president didn't have to happen that way. And if we had stronger council members, it would have been different. You know, I also agree with Rebecca in the sense that we need to actually enforce our laws. We have a lot of things on the books, but for some reason we don't enforce them. And as a lawyer, that that really annoys me. If we have something on the books, I'm going to enforce it. And I'm going to give our city the resources it needs to actually enforce all these laws. You know, when we look at housing, we need to think of the three Ps. Protect tenants, produce housing and preserve communities. And we've done all three of them very, very poorly. So it's time for for new leadership on our council. Folks who are going to stand up to staff and do all three of these things in bold and progressive ways. You know, one of my friends, she used to live downtown in a very charming cottage. But because we didn't enforce the laws there, the owners of them, of those cottages were able to convert that back into one giant single family home. And in this day and age, that's simply unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Now that we've heard from all the candidates, we'll move on to rapid for our questions. Each candidate will just say yes or no to each of the following questions. And if we could get our lovely spreadsheet pulled up.
Love spreadsheets.
We're keeping track of each of the candidate's answers. A little visual for our viewers. Possibly. Oh, there we go. All right, so going down the list, again, just answer yes or no, please. Do you support Prop fifteen, also known as the Schools and Communities First or Split Role Initiative? Templeton?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Eisenberg?
Yes.
Next question. Do you support sixteen to end California's constitutional ban on ban on affirmative action?
Yes. Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Lee?
As Native American, yes, absolutely.
Eisenberg?
Yes.
Next, what is your position on Prop twenty-one, which would expand local authority to enact rent control? Templeton?
I don't, I, I don't have a position on this. I understand where it's coming from and many of the housing activists have said it's not right for Palo Alto. So I'm, I'm open to this, but I don't have a position.
Stone?
Yeah, I'm still making up my mind on Prop twenty-one, too.
Lee?
Yes, absolutely.
Eisenberg?
I'm a tenant and a landlord and I say yes on twenty-one.
Next, do you support measure RR to establish dedicated funding for Caltrain? Templeton?
Absolutely.
Stone?
Yes.
Lee?
Heck, yes.
Eisenberg?
You betcha. Yes.
I like that better. You betcha. I like that one.
Wisconsin.
Now we're going to move on to a few audience questions. Question one. Affordable housing can be costly. Wilton Court, which the council approved last year, has already required over twenty million dollars in city investment. How do you propose we raise the money needed to meet our affordable housing goals? Let's start with Stephen.
Yeah, I've been a big proponent of a business tax. You know, I worked with Pat Burt earlier in the year on a citizens initiative to put a business tax on the ballot this November. And I was quite disappointed that our city council decided to pull it. I think we need that funding now more than ever, especially during COVID, as we're cutting forty million dollars from our budget. We need to ask our larger and still profitable corporations, the ones who are making money during this COVID nineteen times when everyone else is losing money, to step up and pay their fair share. Depending on how we structure it, we could generate anywhere between ten and fifty million dollars a year, which would help significantly subsidize the cost of building much needed affordable housing. So I think we should fund it through our business tax and we should do it now and not wait until COVID nineteen is is over for us to do that. Thank you.
You, Carrie.
Thank you. I, I think we're putting a lot of load on this business tax, so we may need additional stuff. I love the idea and thank you, Stephen, for mentioning that. I, I think we also need to find ways to to make it less costly to apply for a building project. Right now we have many iterations that we go through and it's very costly for the applicants. And I think that that's another area that we can reduce the expense. You know, when these projects come before the PTC and the ARB and the historical resources and then the city council and they do each of those numerous times with their whole teams, those costs really add up. So one of the suggestions that I have is to to really find ways to streamline and have projects which meet certain criteria be able to to get approved faster. So that that would be something I'd add to the mix. Thank you.
Rebecca.
Great. There are a lot of, there are a lot of sources of funding available that without the business tax, which you all know. I am a huge fan of and have been since for at least five years, during which time East Palo Alto and Mountain View both passed these isn't a large business tax to the tune of a ton of money for affordable housing and upgrades for small businesses. Anyway, here are some of the other other sources of funding. We've got the city, the state of California just gave away six hundred million dollars, as I mentioned earlier, that we really should have applied for. And we need to be ready for the next big tranche. As Carrie mentioned, it's really important that we streamline the process for approval of housing. I mean, she on the planning commission, she lives this and it's extremely important that we need to fix this. Additionally, we need to work better with the many nonprofits that do provide funding with public and private, 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 public nonprofit, you know, ventures, projects to build affordable housing. Their sources. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Yes, and sorry, before we could begin, if I can just amend my last, my answer on Prop twenty-one. I had a moment where I was confused on what it was. I do support Prop twenty-one. My apologies. So yeah, so on to this, on to this question. Yeah, definitely. Everyone's already talked about the business tax. I already talked about it earlier, one of my answers as well. Strongly in favor of a business tax to be able to help fund affordable housing. If we just, if we just spent a third of our of our business tax on affordable housing, we would be able to over overnight triple and even more our affordable housing fund. So that is going to be key for us to be able to create that. In addition, the vacancy tax that I talked about, Seattle is already doing that. They have seen not only a disincentive for people to not just use homes as in as an investment tool, but also as a strong tool to be able to create more more housing. In addition, when i- if developers are allowed to pay in lieu fees instead of, instead of actually building affordable units within inclusionary zoning, I think the model that the Board of Supervisors just passed requiring developers to actually pay the amount of money it would cost total to then be able to build that that housing unit, that should be the fee that they're that they're paying. I think the the board set that at two hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars per unit and that would really help us as well.
Greg, we'll start with you again for this next audience question. Numerous studies have shown that single family zoning can reinforce racial and economic segregation. Do you think single family zoning is racist? What kinds of housing policies do you support to help reduce racial and economic exclusion?
Well, I don't think single family zoning i- is racist. Does it, does it have a, does it have a terrible past? Absolutely. But is it racist in its current form? I think, I think that really is insulting to the, to the fifty-five percent of Palo Altons who live in single family zoning and a large amount of California. I mean, almost every, almost every city in this state, if not every city in this state, has single family zoning. So I do not think single family zoning is is the enemy here. And if you, if you actually look at the most affordable cities within the, within California, Colinga, Ridgecrest, Taft, Holtville, all of them have about an equal amount of single family zoning as Palo Alto. And if you look at studies when we are, when we're just looking at at upzoning, that actually, that actually leads to higher housing prices and has led to gentrification in places like New York, Chicago, San Francisco, Los Angeles. There are countless studies that are building up. So I do, so I disagree that this is what is causing our, this is what is causing our, our housing crisis.
Rebecca.
The abuse of single family zoning, yeah, can absolutely reinforce historical systems that reinforce white supremacy and racism at as a direct result of those historical systems does exist today. And we need to acknowledge that it exists. Additionally, when districts are rezoned to single family, that often also has disparate impacts negatively on our communities of color. So that is a problem. Here in Palo Alto, though, there is room for all people to have affordable housing that is single family by reducing the 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 size of the minimum lot size. We just don't need minimum lot sizes. I would say anywhere in this world that is an acre large. If we allow buildings to build up, and by the way, I am very, very strongly in favor of multifamily housing. And I think it should be in a lot of places in Palo Alto. And when it joins us, Stephen said, it increases the value of the home. But yeah, we need to rework these systems of exclusion. We need to rethink them. Thank you.
Stephen.
Yeah, so whether you agree that we should get rid of exclusionary zoning or you want to preserve it, I'm not going to call anyone on either side a racist, but I think we need to acknowledge the racial motivations that went into single family zoning so many years ago and how it's a successor to redlining and to more of evoke forms of discriminatory zoning. So the impact of exclusionary zoning itself, racist and exclusionary, I wouldn't call it a people right. But I think we as people need to go about and fix it. You know, my parents own multiple or single family homes. So you know, the the notion that, you know, just because most people live in single family homes, that in itself doesn't mean that it's not that the policy impact isn't exclusionary, that it isn't racist. So I think we need council members who are going to be honest about that and work to to remedy it and enable us to build duplexes, triplexes and quadplexes in our traditionally single family neighborhoods. Absolutely, it is exclusionary and we need to get, it has no place in twenty twenty.
Carrie.
Thank you. Yeah, I think this question is is definitely framed provocatively and I will respond along the lines of what Rebecca and Stephen said. I don't think that zoning can be racist. I think that behavior can be racist and effects can be felt by a certain community or another community. along racial lines. So what we're seeing is there were racial motivations to how housing was handled in the 20th century. We know this, it's documented. And we even had an article out this week about Berkeley, where I think there was the first single-family zoning in California, or at least the Bay Area. And they were talking about the motivations of instituting that zoning. So I don't think that's the question. The real question is, what can we do about it? And I now have three seconds left, but I think we should talk about that as a community.
Thank you. We're going to move on to one-minute closing statements. We'll start with Rebecca.
Thank you so much for having this forum. Thank you for giving me and the others an opportunity to talk about something that I hope we all can agree on. It's so extremely important for our community, which is our huge need for more affordable housing. You know, as Stephen mentioned, we have a three-to-one ratio of jobs to homes, but when it comes to our lowest-income workers, it's actually seven jobs to one home that they can afford. A lot of these lowest-income workers are the people that serve us, you know, meals in restaurants, and they are the people that help save our lives in hospitals. They're often our frontline essential workers, and we need to give a, you know, we need to make room for them in our community to live, like we rely on them for our safety. We need to value them. As a lawyer and a negotiator with almost 30 years of experience, I will stand up for our community. I will work with the other city council members, and I ask your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Yeah, thank you, Carly and Silicon Valley at home for organizing this event tonight and everybody for showing up and listening to us talk about these really important needs. Housing is my absolute number-one priority, and it's one that I understand very well. As I mentioned earlier, both my wife and I are teachers. We rent a one-bedroom apartment here in Palo Alto. And we recognize the struggle, along with the friends that I grew up with here and the teachers that I work with every day, the struggle to be able to live here. I get concerned when we continue to talk about the solutions to our housing policies being more of what we've done over the past several years, which has been a focus on market rate housing and a focus on upzoning. I think the studies are making it clearer as, as we go that that type of, that type of focus on housing is not creating the type of housing that we need for very low-income people here, to be able to create opportunities for those who have been traditionally shut out of our community. My, my, my housing policies focus not only on all segments of the market, but in particular on creating that housing for the lower segments of this market, for low-income people, and, and workforce housing as well. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you. I'm running for Palo Alto City Council to make the promise of Palo Alto available to everyone in our community. Every income, every age level, every stage of life. I want to have a Palo Alto where nurses can live here. I want to have a Palo Alto where young families can move in and be able to send their kids to some, the best school system. I think that we're seeing a lot of obstructionism around housing on Palo Alto City Council, and it's really important to, to make sure that, that we see through the facade. You know, there's some things that are being proposed that aren't possible, and I think there's other things that are much more doable, and we need to be able to sift through the differences in those policies and platforms. I bring proven experience at City Hall, strong communication and budget management skills, and the resourcefulness needed to reach our goals and to break through obstruction. I ask for your vote. Thank you very much.
Lastly, we have Stephen.
Well, thank you so much for hosting this town hall. You know, as I say time and time again, housing is so inextricably linked to many of the issues we care about as a community. So our inaction or delayed action on housing will continue to impact our community in so many ways, unless we elect true progressive pro-housing candidates. So if we're serious about housing, it's time for bold, progressive, and responsive leadership. And you can tell that I'm that kind of leader based on the endorsements I have. I'm one of only three candidates out of this crowded race of 10 who's been endorsed by the County Democratic Party. I'm endorsed by nine different Democratic Party groups, because they know that I will bring true progressive democratic values and policies here to the local level. I'm endorsed by SDIU 521, our public workers, the folks who would benefit from affordable housing. I'm endorsed by Peninsula for Everyone, because they know that my housing policies will address the housing crisis for all people in our community. I'm endorsed by environmental groups like Carbon Free Palo Alto and the League of Conservation Partners, and I hope to earn your vote this November. Thank you.
Thank you so much to our first group of candidates. We're now going to take a brief intermission, and we'll resume with the second round at 7:00. So thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
It is now 7:00. Do we have our next round of candidates online? Can everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Great. So welcome back, everybody. Thanks again for joining us. Allow me to introduce our second round of candidates. Raven Malone, Patrick Burt, Greg Tanaka, Ed Lowing, and Ajit Barma. Candidates, you will each be given four questions, and we'll have two minutes to respond to each question. So let's get started with Raven. Palo Alto hasn't approved a new apartment building since January 2019, which was also the first affordable housing development approved in seven years. The city is projected to have a requirement under the regional housing needs allocation process to plan for over 10,000 new homes in the next eight-year cycle. What ideas do you have to add thousands of new homes to Palo Alto? What sites offer new opportunities for housing production?
Well, hi, thank you for having me. So I will say that one of the main things that is stopping our, the housing that we could have is our zoning. I know that there are a lot of people who disagree with that, but when we're only allowed to have single-family zoning, it limits the amount of people that we can house in an area. Also, our parking minimums, our, the, the fact that we can't turn, for instance, Palantir. Palantir just left, and it's a huge building, and yet we can't use that for housing. That could have been a ton of units. So I would like to see things there. Also, the Frye site, I would like to see housing there. That would be a good opportunity for market rate and affordable housing. I would like to make it easier for developers, make it a more streamlined process for developers to come here and build housing. There are plenty of places where developers can build housing here, but we make it so hard for them. They, there are developers that specifically don't want to build in Palo Alto, and I think that that's something that we need to address and fix and help build our relationships back with those developers. Also, there's Coverly that will be coming. I would like to see some affordable housing there, especially for our essential workers, for our teachers. It's really unfortunate that the, the main people who kind of help our city run are being pushed off to the side when it comes to affordability and the ability to live in Palo Alto. Even with our first responders, only our police chief can afford to live here. Everyone else lives 30 minutes to two hours away, and that's from our police department and our fire department. These are things that need to be fixed, and it's important that we address them. But I do plan to push for more housing as well as making it easier for the process to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Raven. Patrick?
Yeah, thanks. So actually, in 2017, we completed a several-year process of 13-year update to our general plan, we call our comprehensive plan. And in that, it set guidelines that embraced significant increase in housing zoning and moderation of new office development. And that was adopted 2017, 2018. The city adopted the farthest-reaching changes to its housing zoning in decades. It's called the Housing Incentive Plan, and it upzoned and streamlined the process for low-income housing, moderate, and, and market-rate housing, with the lowest-income housing being the highest density and the most streamlined. The following year, in 2019, we began to see a series of projects that are accelerating now. And so the impacts of that are really starting to take hold, but there remain several problems. One is funding for affordable housing. That's both an issue of the supplemental funding that we have to use to leverage to get state and federal funds and the cost of the land. And so there are ways that we can have publicly-owned land and nonprofit land of our surface parking lots and our faith institutions, be sites for affordable housing, impact fees, and, and the business tax to specifically fund affordable and workforce housing. On top of that, what we need to do is take away the underlying zoning in certain locations that we've already designated for housing of our downtowns, two downtowns, the El Camino corridor, and expand that into areas of San Antonio, the Stanford Research Park, so that the Housing Incentive Plan will apply there, and the housing doesn't have to compete with much higher return of office for that land, and that will reduce the competitive costs and accelerate the housing.
Greg?
Social economic diversity is really disappearing in our city, and I think this is actually not a change that people want. I think the social economic diversity in our city is actually really important. And really, the best way to get more housing in our city is smaller units. They're naturally more affordable. They have, they have less cost in terms of construction costs. They have less cost in terms of land cost, because they take up less land, and they don't need government subsidies to build. So this is the, this is the way that we could do it. It's going to be really hard to build more single-family homes to get that target that you mentioned earlier. The other part is streamline the process. So as some of the other candidates mentioned, a lot of developers don't want to build in our city anymore. Paul to Housing Corporation, Affordable Housing Nonprofit, change your name, because they really aren't really much affordable housing in our city anymore. We've got to streamline the process, and we also have incredibly uncertain entitlement process. So it's very, very risky for developers to even try to start building in our city. So a lot of developers have gone to other cities, Redwood Cities, Mountain View, Millwall Park, almost every city but our city. The impact fees have really prevented the building of housing. So on council, I approved the Mike's Bike Project, which is housing of all types on El Camino where the old Mike's Bike retail shop used to be. They're not moving forward. Why? The construction costs and my fees are so high that basically they would lose money building this project. So we got, we got to fix this. We need to have more units, smaller, more dense units near transit. That's the best way. You know, it kind of alleviates need for parking, for, for cars, for parking. And another way to handle this also is to have more mechanized parking structures. Mechanized parking structures are two to four times more efficient. You can park two to four, two to four times more parked cars for the same square footage by using mechanized parking. So this is also part of the solution. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Ed.
Thanks very much. Thanks for hosting this. Yes, the, on the planning commission, we've worked on a number of things in my almost four years. One that took us a couple of years is what Pat just described, which is the Housing Improvement Plan. And like all new projects, it took a little bit of time to catch on, but now we're getting some bites on that. And what we did was increase, we basically gave away some concessions. I don't want to detail through it, and that's exactly what we should do. There's more density, there's less parking, and so on. But it's within the realm of being, you know, logical and reasonable. So we're starting to get some bites there. The other thing we've just recently done is we recommended to council that we open up the CS zones, which have never before been able to take housing. And now we can put housing there, according to our recommendation. It hasn't passed yet. Essentially, I like to think of it as we created land in Palo Alto, because it wasn't there before. And now we can put housing on that land, and land is the most crucial problem we have in terms of putting up particularly affordable housing. So I'm very enthusiastic about that, and particularly that's along the San Antonio corridor. And I also coupled with that the insistence that we do a, a study on that with respect to the transportation, because it's quite clogged. And I feel that you can never do land use and housing without looking at transportation. So to me, the most, there's also the Research Park, things like Palo Alto Square, that we could have an opportunity to be creative and move the needle a little bit on concessions to get, you know, a lot of housing. My goal is to get affordable housing that is an emergency, as I've declared it, and, you know, other people have agreed with me. So that's the focus. We have to focus on that relentlessly so that we get that. And I think that we will be able to get other segments, particularly the missing middle, and then regular old market rate will come along, because of some of the projects will pull that along. So I'm pretty confident, but we got to focus on it relentlessly.
Ajit?
So the housing issues are pretty much rooted in supply and demand issues. There's a lot of demand, and there's not enough supply. So we have two choices. We can reduce the demand, we can destroy our economy, we can make people want to leave. And I feel like some of our policies are going in that direction, which I think we should aggressively change. I think we should be accommodating, and we should encourage people to move here. We should encourage the press and voters to come to Palo Alto. So then the solution has to be on the supply side. So for me, I'm very much in favor of significantly more density in the right areas in Palo Alto. So I think that places like El Camino, things like San Antonio Road, Page Mall Road, I feel like there's a lot of spaces where we have very low density that can accommodate much higher density. There, these corridors have roads, they have transportation access, they have highway access. And so by density, that to me is, we're removing a lot of the difficult building restrictions that discourage development. So changing the height limit, changing the parking restrictions. And these are all about making it economically feasible for developers to actually build significantly more housing. So you see a lot of projects that right now, like, are stuck in limbo, because there's sort of unrealistic demand for affordable housing. And effectively, that makes it so no housing gets built at all, because the economics can't work. And effectively that makes it so no housing gets built at all because the economics can't work for, for the people who want to build a housing. So they try for a little while and then they leave. Or there are projects that they get told one thing and then they come back and they try to build something and it doesn't work. I also believe that with this like way to make this work economically is for mixed use development. So the price of office and retail is very expensive in Palo Alto. So you can work with companies to say in return for having some company space, you have to build, say, two units for every unit of housing built. And so you can change the ratios pretty quickly by working with very rich companies. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll also start with you Ajit. North Ventura was a formerly redlined community that saw significant gentrification in subsequent decades. The neighborhood now has only three percent black residents and a median home value of two point four million dollars. What is your vision for redevelopment of the North Ventura area?
So I think that a lot of like the historical policies that you read are very clearly wrong, wrong policies. And there were a lot of mistakes that were made in the past. And so Ventura is an opportunity for us to correct these mistakes that were made in the past. So it is a very large lot. It is near El Camino. It is relatively close to public transportation. So what I would like to see is a significant amount of density added there. There's a lot of proposals where it's actually not just housing, but to actually get a lot more density. It's like, can we allow green spaces? Can we allow parks? Can we allow retail restaurants and housing? And so for me, like I believe that we, that we should build all those. I think that a lot of the issues that we also see are that people don't really feel welcome in Palo Alto because a lot of the perception that we have, whether it's like Foothills Park or the perception that, that we're not very inclusive. So I think there's a lot of like outreach that needs to be done, a lot of changing of like people's views on our stances on development. And again, it just comes down to like significant density is, is what I think needs to ultimately be the way that we get out of our housing crisis. And so out of all the proposals that I've seen, like I would definitely support those that are, they're the ones on the side of much more density and significant density in those areas. I think it's also an area where you can work with companies who want to be there. Like I read the target wants to be there and create amenities as well. So I think there's a lot of opportunity in sites like that. And we should make sure that we don't lose the opportunity because they're very rare to find land of that size in Palo Alto. Thanks.
Thanks, Ed.
Thanks. I think that that's just a wonderful opportunity and we need to continue the citizens group. That's been working so hard on that. There's some rumor that we should stop that and just get going, but I want to listen to citizens on that and they don't tell me that it's done. They tell me that even one of their new proposals M needs to be, you know, thoroughly considered. That's, that's long range. That, that requires some city financing, but we ought to give that a fair shake. I do think we have to have almost a complete strategic plan for the whole area. So we're not just randomly putting up a building here and a piece of housing there. And that doesn't mean a planned community, like it has to be, you know, tightly run by the city. But there's, there's wonderful opportunities there for housing. Actually, as Ajit said, you know, you have to, in any housing development, you have to provide for services and amenities, places to eat and walk and be in, in some open space. So that all has to be calculated into the, into the analysis there. The emphasis again, I feel in every project we look at, has to be on truly affordable housing. That's the only way we can create economic and ethnic ethnicity in our town. And that has to be the focus. So we have to, you know, fund it to get that kind of housing by using some of the partnerships that are possible with other corporations, with the state, if we can ever get the money from them, et cetera. But that is the kind of vision that I would have for that. And I just, again, salute the citizens that are working on this to, to try to get the right answer. It's not, there, there's a sensitivity that people are looking at Ventura because it's, you know, a lower income area and, and it's getting, all the housing is getting dumped there. That's not a message that we should send as a city because it's just not, it's not true. We have to find opportunities to put up housing everywhere because of the crisis.
Next, we'll hear from Greg.
So I think this area represents a great opportunity to really utilize the area better. But I think the piece that a lot of people forget is the ownership of this area. Like who owns what in this area? And the ownership is actually quite concentrated with a few relatively large land, landowners. And so when you zone, you have to keep that in mind. You can't, you could zone for something, but if the underlying owner doesn't want to or can't do it, or is not economically feasible for them, for them to do it, they're not going to do it. So I think that's something that is really missing from this discussion is the fact of what does that landlord want to do? The landowners there are, are there to make a profit. And so if you're trying to make them lose money to build something, they're not going to do it. And so I think that's, that's the other piece that's really important is not just zoning, but also being good partners with the people that are there to actually make what we want happen. So for instance, right now, what they're thinking about, because this is the only thing that's economically feasible for them to do it, is thinking about just putting a small retail, small target retail store, store there. And you know, so I, while I think that's a great opportunity, I think we have to be, we have to be good partners. Because it's not just what the city wants and what the people there wants, but it's also what the landlords there want. And so by working together, you can actually make things happen. So I bring up the Mike's Bike Project again, you know, we approved that two years ago. Still not being built, hasn't broken ground. Developers probably going to just abandon the project or sell it off. Or, or rejig it somehow to make it work. But this area, you know, it can have a lot more density near El Camino in the commercial areas. I think it makes a lot of sense to have mixed use here. You know, it's, it's walking distance from the Caltria Station. So I think I could talk to a little smaller units, which are naturally more affordable, make a lot of sense in this area. And so I think it's a great opportunity, but I hope that we're able to be good partners so we can actually make this happen.
Next up, Patrick.
Thanks. So the Ventura neighborhood's a great neighborhood. It's, it's really been one of our historically most diverse neighborhoods. Actually, some of the housing that remains right by the Frye's site was low income workforce housing for the original cannery there that is now what became Frye's and, and is the centerpiece of that development. The North Ventura Coordinated Area Planner, NBCAP, the neighborhood representatives and other neighborhood folks who weren't on that plan have come forward this with their own proposal. And contrary to a lot of misconceptions, but consistent with experience I've had with neighborhood groups in Palo Alto is when they're empowered, what they have wanted is low income and workforce housing ahead of office or market rate housing. And that's not what is the common refrain. And they came forward with what Ed mentioned of this own proposal of alternative M. Now that's almost entirely low income housing. I think that we have to have a balance of all three to make it economical and to meet the range of needs that we have. A market rate workforce and low income. Unfortunately, our market rate housing is where we actually fall furthest short in Palo Alto because for decades we, market rate developers, I said, I may have misspoken workforce housing is where we fall shortest. Market rate developers cannot build it successfully. We have subsidies for the amount of low income we do. We have to actually have a modest amount of subsidy for the workforce housing. And that would be part of that as well. Mirror market rate density is, as some have talked about, will further gentrify that neighborhood. It will not reduce the gentrification. We have to have those subsidies with the additional funding that I talked about before. On top of that, we had actually downzoned that or changed the zoning to housing decades ago. And the council in, in two thousand and seven reversed that and allowed the continuation of the offices for now.
Thanks, Pat. Raven?
So I see the North Ventura area as a great opportunity to build housing. Especially the housing that we're not currently meeting. Pat is completely right about our CAFR. And we had a plan to build three hundred thousand units per year, but we've been failing to do that every year. So we've been failing to meet the goals that we've set for ourselves. I think that this site is a great place to make up for that housing. Three hundred units per year. I think that it, this site is a great place to make up for that, especially for our essential workers, our teachers, our firefighters, our police officers. And I also agree with Pat about the, the North Ventura Coordinated Area Plan. I think that that proposal is a really good idea, especially having about four hundred below market rate housing units for the teachers and our seniors and the people who really make this place special, people with disabilities. And the city also had a, a great plan to finance this through municipal bonds. I, I would like to see that happen. To be fair, I would also like to see more of what we got from the sofa areas. We were able to get a good mix of housing as well as we got a park, we got some commercial development because I understand that there is a want to build a target. But I mean, again, I, I would like to see more housing because that's what's really important right now, especially if we already have a plan for how to fund it. I would like to see the city take advantage of this opportunity. Thank you.
Next question, we'll start with Greg. Eighty-seven percent of Palo Alto's residential land is zoned exclusively for single family homes. Research from UC Berkeley has found high levels of restrictive zoning like this to be associated with greater segregation. Do you support allowing missing middle multifamily housing in single family zoned neighborhoods?
Carla, good question. So if you look at the average family size in America and you look at the average house, house size, right? The average family size has actually been, been getting smaller and smaller every year, but the average house size has been getting bigger. And it's a little bit crazy if you look at the past few decades is, is what's been happening. And, you know, I, I don't believe a big house necessarily, a better house per se. And I think a great way actually, actually solving this problem is actually is with ADUs. So ADUs, so in our, in our single family neighborhoods, you actually build accessory dwelling units or junior accessory dwelling units that are attached to houses or separated. And this has been a great way to actually add housing in our, in our city. It has a relatively low impact. It allows multi-generational living. So like one of my neighbors, they bought it, they, they built an ADU, they're moving into that and then they're giving the main house to their daughter. And so like three generations could live there. So it has really great social benefits as well. And then I know another neighbor here, you know, she's, she's widow. Basically, she's building ADU for herself to live in and then she's renting out the main house. So lots of kind of age in place. So there's lots of, lots of benefits here. You know, on, on Monday, we, we loosened the rules for ADUs to make them more, more possible. We still need to do more to make it more streamlined. There's some cities have like ADU days. I've been pushing for allowing more underground development for ADUs. We parking there, you can make, you can have larger units. But I think this is kind of, this is kind of part of the direction that we have to go in, in terms of really trying to solve the housing supply. So I, I like, Ajit said about earlier, which is there's demand side. I don't think anyone wants to trash the city so that nobody wants to live here. I think that's a good thing. So you have to look at supply and ADUs and single family areas works. It's been one of our successful programs in terms of building new housing.
Next, let's hear from Ed.
Yeah. I, I get very frustrated when this question is raised in this campaign. Because it tends to sidestep the, the real issue. There's no question that there was racism in this town fifty years ago, forty years ago. I'm sure there are pockets of racism right now. But we really need to focus on the top priority. The top priority is to getting, is to get low income people to have a chance to get into our town at all. And to do that, as we've been discussing, you have to have smaller units, more density. Some of that can be ADUs. But more of it is in the mixed use areas by transit, et cetera. It doesn't work. It just doesn't work. The math doesn't work to try to knock down a six million dollar house and then put up a duplex and say that they're each going to be a million and a half, which is already ridiculous. Because the land price goes up immediately and developers would never do anything besides buy out homeowners at really high prices and give them a great incentive to sell and then build all these units and sell them for two or three million dollars. It's just nuts, you know? I mean, what we would have is a great supply of market rate housing and that's not really our primary goal. Market rate should come along with our focus on the most important crisis areas of affordable and missing middle. That's the way to focus on this thing. So to do that, you know, we're, we're mixing up our messages here. And it's just not, it's just not true because I believe that there's insatiable demand, to your point Ajit, there's insatiable demand. Maybe for all housing in Palo Alto, but certainly for market rate housing. So if we put up more of those units, we're going to be, actually in the, in the last session, which I listened in on Stephen, Stephen Lee said, don't worry, your market, your housing, your, your land value is not going to go down. He's totally right. It's going to go way up, which is wrong because it gets too many incentives to people to sell and create fourplexes, let's say, which are not affordable. Wrong approach.
Ajit?
So I agree with a lot of what Ed said around, like I just don't think it solves the problem that we have. So when you look at like ADUs, like I think ADUs have for a while been held up as this example of now there's another unit in the back that there's less restrictions on and that's going to solve the housing problems. I think people build ADUs. I think that they often like keep them for themselves. I think whether it's home offices or they just don't choose to, choose to build them. And so when you just like force like density, I mean, I think people should be able to do what they want with their land, but I think that it's not going to solve the problem. And so that's where I look at is there are other solutions that I think are much better for Palo Alto. Like building density on El Camino, on University Avenue, on California Avenue. And that's where you can look at, you know, there's proposals for like a hundred nineteen unit building near El Camino and Page Mill. And so I think that these are the better solutions rather than like hoping that lots of individual homeowners are going to like build, I think that'll take a very long time. And I also don't think it'll, it'll really be significant improvements. You see even historically, like there were large lodge lots and then they converted them into things like flag lots. And they're just expensive, like they're, they're still all very expensive housing. So I would just again iterate that I think we need much more density in the right areas like around El Camino, around Page Mill. And I think we can build like great units. And with those, like I do support affordable housing along with market rate housing along with office development in order to make the economics like actually work. So that people are getting, seeing actual real development rather than a lot of the projects that you see today, which are in limbo and have been in limbo for quite a while. Thanks.
Raven?
Um, yes, so I, I do think that we need to fix the zoning. It, it is causing a problem and it's been scientific, well scientifically, scientifically proven to push out people of color because it makes those areas too expensive. And kind of just touching on what Greg said, the average family size is shrinking because the housing costs keep going up and the average salary isn't going up to match the housing. So it's making it hard for people to have kids, especially the newer generations. And there isn't enough of this supply to meet the demand for our zoning. And the problem isn't that we're tearing down six million dollar homes and building multifamily units. It's the opposite. The problem is that our zoning is primarily single family zoning. So we're tearing down these triplexes or fourplexes and then we're putting up one single family home. I do agree with Ajit that we need to focus on density near transit to help with the affordability, but there is still the demand. So we still need to build that market rate housing in order to even have funding for the affordable housing. Currently, our affordable housing is built, is paid for by our commercial development, which is limited. And another way to get the affordable housing is when developers build three or more residential units. The developers required to contribute to at least fifteen percent of those units at below market rates. So that's why I focus on density when it comes to housing. But I mean, it, if without getting rid of the zoning loss that we have here in Palo Alto, we're just going to keep pushing people out, including the people who help this city thrive. And I mean, I don't know about you guys, but I just go into the stores, no one No one lives here. We're, we're literally pushing out any working class people.
Thank you, Patrick.
Yes, so, uh, the question was, um, largely accurate up until three years ago. It isn't accurate today. In twenty sixteen, uh, when I was still in council, we initiated ahead of the state, a revision to our ADU ordinance. And, uh, a little over a year later, at the beginning of twenty eighteen, uh, we adopted a widespread expansion so that virtually every lot in Palo Alto allows a second unit as a, as a, uh, senior ADU, which is a bonus of up to eight hundred square feet of, uh, development beyond the housing. Now, uh, we've just, uh, uh, moved forward with the second ADU, which is junior ADU. Uh, so a second ADU on every lot, and that's part of the internal house. And, uh, so as a result, um, the amount of housing that is owned for in Palo Alto in the R one neighborhoods is almost triple the number of units that it was just three plus years ago. Uh, citywide, it almost doubled the amount of zoning that is available for housing just in what happened in the R one neighborhoods, not counting the real focus areas, which is to convert commercial land to housing and to upzone as we did, uh, in the, uh, housing improvement zone areas. Others are right, then when, when we do increase the density, we increase the land value. That's one of the problems. So this is not a panacea. And, uh, if we're really looking at wanting to increase the show, social and economic diversity, we have to do it through very strategic ways. The ADUs are an important part of that. And then we have to have the zoning for all three income levels. And we have to have the funding through a business tax and it, uh, impact fees on offices that the current, uh, council has twice turned down, uh, that will allow us to subsidize workforce housing and, uh, affordable housing. That housing for teachers and nurses has to be subsidized. It won't come from market rate.
Thank you, Patrick. The next question will also start with you. Palo Alto has experienced substantial losses in residential housing stock. The hotel president was converted from apartments back into hotels, small multifamily housing duplexes, triplexes, and has been demolished to build more expensive homes at lower densities. What policies would you support to preserve existing multifamily housing that is relatively affordable?
Um, a couple of policies. Uh, so as a result of the debacle on the president hotel, which I agree with some of the other candidates that, um, uh, was mishandled by staff, and I think we had a stronger legal case for, um, for opposing that conversion. But we had, um, a number of the council members who, uh, were not willing to make, uh, that stand. But we did out of that have, um, significant changes to our requirements on relocation expenses. Uh, we also need to up or change our zoning that would in fact put in place the rules that we think the previous, uh, zoning had, but strengthen them and make them clear that you can't convert, uh, existing housing to commercial uses. On top of that, uh, Raven mentioned, uh, the problem of, uh, we've had historic quad and village, uh, clusters in our R one neighborhoods and in our transitional neighborhoods between downtown and R one. And what we need to do is, uh, put in place a no net loss, uh, on housing ordinance. And this has been discussed and promoted and it's the right thing to do. And that way we can preserve all of those units, uh, both the higher density type like the president hotel and, uh, what we do have today in our, uh, single family neighborhoods. I happen to live in a neighborhood that has a mixture of ADUs and, and cottage clusters and has for many decades. And it creates a great richness in our neighborhood. That's not the same neighborhood as Eichler neighborhoods and for instance. Uh, but that's, that's part of the issue. I also want to talk about, um, the, uh, supply and demand balance. So no one is talking about, uh, reducing the amount of jobs we have, which is a three to one imbalance. We're talking about lowering the rate of high income job growth and balancing housing to job growth, and that's what we really need to do.
Let's hear from Raven.
So I completely disagree with what happened with the president hotel. Um, I, I think that we honestly did this community a disservice by allowing, um, all those housing units to be turned into a hotel. So policies that I would like to implement, um, first off, allowing more flexibility within our zoning. I, I feel like I just keep repeating that, but it's true. Um, we have to stop allowing, um, also not allowing any housing to be turned into commercial development, um, not allowing, uh, housing that is, uh, multifamily units to be turned into, uh, single family units. I mean, we're in the middle of a housing crisis and we're going backwards every time we do that. And, um, I, I would also like to see us make it easier to, uh, develop more multifamily units. I, I do agree with Pat. I actually live in a neighborhood with, um, ADUs as well. I live in an ADU. And I feel like it adds to the character of the neighborhood. Um, are multifamily units right for every neighborhood? No, absolutely not. But we do have to accept that they are already existing in Palo Alto. They are not the enemy. They will not bring down your housing value. If anything, in some cases, they've been known to increase the value of properties surrounding them. So I think that it's important that we gauge each neighborhood, um, before deciding whether or not to allow multifamily units, um, there because I do want to make sure that I'm respectful to, um, everyone's homes and their neighborhoods and, and everyone doesn't want multifamily units in their neighborhoods and, and I respect that. But we are in the middle of a housing crisis and it is important that we make it, um, easier to allow people to move into Palo Alto. Thank you.
Ajit.
So I've heard, um, of many examples in Palo Alto where someone was living in a, say duplex or triplex. And then they were evicted and the triplex was just say demolished and replaced with a single family house that was much more expensive. And I think in a lot of these cases, like what has happened is, um, there's sort of like some expectation of like, well, what, what will happen? Like will the developer go denser? Um, and, and of course, like in a, in a weird way, like rental properties, uh, are not as economically lucrative as single family homes in Palo Alto. So I think for these cases, it's like where we should put like restrictions on developers to say, if you are, uh, you know, taking over a property, it's not just like the zoning that's, that was there currently. It's like, if there was an exception made in the past for denser, uh, like, places like a triplex, then I think we should ensure that any development that comes in that area is at least that density or more. Um, and so when you look at other, uh, properties, like say, University Avenue, where developers might want to come in, um, and say, uh, remove a building and put something else in place. I think we should make sure that whatever is put in place, um, has more housing than what was previously there. And I think that you can look at these checks of like what happens after the fact. And I think a lot of developers look for economic feasibility in order to make that happen. And I think that that's like where the city can give them concessions to say, you know, do they get more square footage for the land size? Um, or the other like options that they can be given in order to ensure that it's feasible, that this building isn't empty. Or they just like sit on it and then because the president hotel, like nothing really seems to be getting done with it right now. Um, and so it's just like, we lost housing and nothing is, is there right now. And so I think that's where we just have to like look back and work to make sure that whatever new comes in, uh, is actually better than what was there before.
Ed.
Yes, thanks. Um, the, the president hotel is, it's just a, it's a tragedy and, and a disaster. And, uh, you know, losing those housing units when we're so desperate for affordable housing is just, I mean, it puts cracks in my heart. But, um, the issue there, as I think I said on one other forum, is that I, uh, I agree with Pat that, you know, it just didn't seem to me like we roll over and play dead on the legal front. Uh, we need to fight that and we need to fight that for that case because it was important to go to the mat for that, for all those units and for all those citizens. Really important as a value statement for what we stand for in Palo Alto. It would also be a signal to developers that we're not going to roll over and play dead. The first time you raise an issue and say, okay, well, we, we want to just go ahead and do this. So that's history, but I hope we learn from that. The core thing that we have to learn from and a couple of, uh, you know, candidate colleagues here have, have mentioned it is that you can't change these things out without putting up more housing than what you're taking away and have the, uh, the, the, the heart and the money to give these folks, you know, first right of refusal at the same kind of rates so that their lives are not completely disruptive, disrupted. So that's the sort of moral obligation and I don't see any problem baking that into, uh, changes in, in zoning laws. So the, I also think the idea of maintaining the amount of density that was there, uh, if that was a threeplex or a fourplex and say you can't go below that, I'm, I'm, I'm very much in favor of that. Now, some people are going to say you're restricting private citizens, but we're in an emergency here. And as I've been saying, when you're in an emergency, you do things different. When you go to the emergency room, the doctors try things are not going to try in your office in the, with your internist. But we got to try some things. If over time, it doesn't become as much of a problem, we can pull back then. You know, zoning laws are supposed to be in place to, you know, regulate. They don't have to be placed forever and, you know, hopefully Palo Alto will still be around if we can control the sea, uh, for a long time and we can adjust it later.
That's your time. Thank you. Greg, let's hear from you.
Sure. So, uh, yeah, thank you for the question, Carly. What's really, really interesting here is, um, a lot of people hold up, uh, hotel president as the model for like affordable housing, right? Small units, you know, generally not that much for rent. And what's really interesting is ironically, it couldn't be built today, right? I mean, you look at the height limit, you look at the density it has, um, you know, but, but I think, I think this is actually kind of part of the solutions, like buildings like this, where you have the density, you have smaller units. It was actually a hotel originally, right? Which is why you, you have smaller units and, and so I, I think that's something that needs to be thought about is actually near transit, near the, near the University Avenue Caltrain Station. And really the solution to our housing problem is really going to be around these small units. You don't need government subsidies. Uh, we need to streamline it more. And I think there's probably not as good of an understanding about economics in terms of, um, housing, housing units. So, I mean, there's a, there's a thought that, oh gee, if you have a six million dollar house, it's way more profitable, the six million dollar single family house versus multiple units on that property, but actually it's not true. Unless there's zoning that prevents it. Generally, it's actually much more profitable to build more units than one big one generally, right? Especially in down, down economies. But what prevents it is the zoning code, right? The parking dent, the parking requirements. The, the density, uh, limits that you could have, uh, but this is actually how we do it. So what we need to do is things like the hotel president, which allow denser units, smaller units, near transit. You know, there's, there's even a trend towards co-housing where you have a shared kitchen or shared living room. This is kind of like the direction of how to make things much more affordable without needing tremendous government subsidies like we did on Wilton Court. And, you know, in locations like near transit, like University Avenue, where there's, there's places to eat, places to go. It's your living rooms, the coffee shop downstairs. And I, I think this is how we solve the housing problems by looking at properties like the hotel president.
Thank you, Greg. Next, we're going to move on to rapid fire questions. Please get the spreadsheet. Each candidate will just respond with a yes or no response to each of the following questions. First question, do you support Prop fifteen, also known as the School and Communities First or Split Role Initiative? Malone?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Tanaka?
Yes, but with carve out for small businesses.
Lowing?
Yes.
Pharma?
Yes.
Next question, do you support Prop sixteen to end California's constitutional ban on affirmative action? Malone?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Tanaka?
Yes.
Lowing?
Yes.
Pharma?
Yes.
What is your position on Prop twenty-one, which would expand local authority to enact rent control? Malone?
I support the, um, having the option of rent control. Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Tanaka?
Uh, is it my turn or Ed's turn?
Yes, you're sorry, Greg.
Okay, um, I, I have no position. I, I think rent control reduces the supply of housing.
Yeah, I have not read it. I favor limiting, uh, the increase in housing over about five percent, but I'd rather read it before I, you know, give you an answer on it. So I'm still open.
Ajit?
Uh, no, I, I believe the local city should have control over this.
Is that a yes or a no on Prop twenty-one?
It is a no.
I believe that it does allow for local control over it. It just gives you the option to have it.
Oh, then I'd be a yes.
That's why I wanted to read it.
It, it gives you the option to have, uh, rent control.
Okay, yeah, it's low.
On any properties older than fifteen years.
Right. What Pat said.
Let's move on to, uh, measure our arms. Malone?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Tanaka?
Yes.
Lowing?
Strong, yes.
Pharma?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, next, we're going to go back to audience questions. For the sake of time, we're just going to answer the first question that we posed to the other set of candidates. Starting with Ajit. Affordable housing can be costly. Wilton Court, which the council approved last year, has already required over twenty million dollars in city investment. How do you prepare to raise the money needed to meet our affordable housing goals?
So this is where I think that we can work with a lot of, uh, the wealthier companies in Silicon Valley in order to create, uh, mixed use development. So companies like Google have announced that they're going to invest a billion dollars in housing in the Bay Area. They're building mixed use on their campus in, uh, Mountain View. Facebook is building mixed use developments in their campus in Menlo Park. And basically with this is kind of like how you can, uh, make something that's economically feasible, uh, without relying on like nonprofit corporations, which as we've seen, like it's just been difficult for them to make the economics work in order to, to build things. So I think this is definitely where, uh, with his money, it's like, not just like city money, but it's, uh, using, uh, companies that have land and resources in order to build housing for their employees, uh, in addition to the office space that they're building.
Pat?
So we need multiple approaches to it. Um, first, we do need more funding for not only the low income housing, but the workforce, the moderate income housing, which has to be subsidized with our high land costs. And that has to come from impact fees. Uh, the current council reversed the increase in impact fees on office development that we had put in place in late twenty sixteen. Those fees actually also not only apply to Palo Alto, but they're the fee structure that's, uh, the county uses on Stanford. So that would have doubled our affordable housing fund uh, and the business tax that Steve Lee mentioned before, uh, a third of that would have tripled our affordable housing fund. Those are massive increases as well. But we also need to, uh, look at, uh, the land cost and, um, city owned land like surface parking lots and nonprofit land like faith institutions, uh, are really important. I think philanthropy has a role and including corporate philanthropy, but it will not be the solution to our problems.
Thank you, Greg.
So I, I agree with Ajit in terms of partnering with local companies. Uh, we all heard about the bone dollar investment that Google is making and, and other companies also thinking about doing the same thing. So I think that's definitely part of the solution. But I think the reality we also have to think about is that a three thousand square foot single family home on a, our one lot, no matter what the taxes or how rich the government is, which by the way, you know, Palo Alto, right now, we're really sucking wind right now in terms of our. no matter what the taxes or how rich the government is, which by the way, you know, Palo Alto, right now, we're really sucking wind right now in terms of our budget. You'll never have enough money to make a three thousand square foot single family home in Milpota affordable. It's just just not realistic. What is realistic is to have small units, right? You don't need to have a two thousand square foot house to be happy, to have a good home. You need to streamline the red tape that prevents all the housing from being built, even housing that's already been approved. And we have to have a more stern entitlement process because right now the entitlement process scares off developers. Developers don't even want to come to our city. So that's that's what we need to, that's what we need to do to actually build housing and not just zone for it, but to actually build it.
Yeah, thank you. I think that it's multiple approaches. Like Pat said, I definitely support a modest business fee for large corporations, and I think we can start that very soon. That's just a sort of a fair share approach that will get us there. But the last time we were calculations about that, it was about a ten to forty million a year and maybe more. And the development fees need to stay in place. They were reduced and they should go up. And when I first started running, I talked about partnerships, and now others are talking about it, and I'm glad because the message is getting out. Google is actually about a billion and a half, and Apple is about four hundred million. And we should be having a seat at that table. And I don't know, to my knowledge, nobody on council or on staff has been at that table. They should have a commercial and a sort of a community feeling an interest economically and in our community to be partners with us on that kind of stuff.
Raven?
So to pay for affordable housing, we can look at business taxes, taxing the large businesses, of course, not the small businesses. So taxing businesses with more than fifty employees and allowing that the amount of the tax to fluctuate based on the size of the company and then taking a portion of that and applying that to our affordable housing fund. That would pay for so much housing by itself, but not to beat a dead horse. Also, looking at density incentives for developers, which require, of course, raising our height requirements. This would encourage developers to, instead of creating fifteen percent affordable housing, maybe twenty, twenty-five, thirty, depending on the density of the units. Also, state funding, California actually has given away money for affordable, well, for housing. And we missed an opportunity with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Now each candidate will get one minute for a closing statement. Let's start with Raven.
Thank you. So I want to build better infrastructure for our future, advocate for housing as a human right because it is, and reimagine community safety. Please vote for me. I will bring a fresh perspective, innovative ideas, and more importantly, I'll listen to your concerns. Bring your voices to the table and work hard to make sure that we're not still only talking about problems, but also finding solutions. I believe that city council's job is to improve the lives and well beings of our constituents. And it's important that we keep this in mind while we're establishing policies and seeing them through, not only our current constituents, but the future generation as well. I want to bring the voices to the table who haven't felt heard in years. This includes the working class renters, our senior citizens, and our own essential workers, who are the reason that the city is as great as is today. I do hope to earn one of your four votes this election, and thank you so much for inviting me to this forum, and thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Raven. Ajit?
So I think that our lack of housing is one of the biggest obstacles to Palo Alto providing opportunities for for people. And I think that it's critical that we address this need. We've been talking about it for decades now. There's been a lot of half-hearted attempts to make it happen. And I think that we have to really look at some of the things like height restrictions, parking requirements, that make it just very infeasible to develop the kind of density and the level of housing that we need. So I'm a very big proponent of significant density in the right areas and making sure that we provide housing for everybody who wants to live in Palo Alto. We have a great opportunity to make the world a better place. We have great schools. We have great resources. We have great green areas. And I would love to provide an opportunity for anyone who wants to live here to be able to live here.
Thank you. Next, let's hear from Pat.
Thanks, and I want to thank you for an opportunity tonight to have actually the most in-depth discussion of the issue that we've had in the campaign and a thoughtful one. We've had too much extreme polarization on this issue for a number of years in the region. So I believe in what is a sustainable growth for our region. That means that we have to have change that provides for the social and the economic and the environmental qualities for future generations that that we've had today. To do that, we need to have a supply and demand growth. The demand side of the equation is incredibly important. We've had for every high tech job, we have four additional jobs that are created in the region, and most of those are lower income. So we have to come up with ways to hit that balance. UC Santa Cruz showed that ninety percent of our workers over the last twenty years in this region have seen a decline in real income. So we have to address these comprehensively.
Thank you, Greg.
Carly, thank you so much for having this forum, and thank you everyone for attending. This is an extremely important topic, so I'm glad we're addressing it. You know, Palo Alto right now faces some severe unprecedented challenges. Notably, this COVID nineteen health emergency that's driving this incredible economic crisis, some call like depression, right? And many challenges why preserving a quiet life and keeping Palo Alto vibrant and safe requires vigilance, sense of spending and a recovery plan. I have the skills and experience to help to see with all three of these. This is why I have doubled the number of endorsements versus the next closest candidate. I'm backed by Silver, which is the Realtor Group, the California Department Association. I'm the only candidate backed by people and organizations that actually build housing because I understand what it takes to have housing built and I have their confidence. No other candidate has backing like that. I will make City Hall work for you. And so I hope I earn your guys' vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Lastly, Ed?
Yeah, thanks. Crucial issue, my number one top priority. It's a personal issue for me. I mean, my parents grew up poor, no, no sugar coating on it. And, you know, I was the first generation to go to college, but I spent all my money to get there. I finally got a way in to housing and then could have kind of what I call the, you know, a lifetime of housing moving, moving up. The Palo Alto Weekly endorsing me said that, you know, Ed rightly calls housing an emergency, and the San Jose Mercury endorsing me said the same thing. This is by far our number one priority. We have to let people in to our town for any kind of diversity, and diversity is my most important value personally. And I think should be the most important value for Palo Alto. We will get affordable housing built in the next four years if I get one of your votes. Thank you.
Thank you so much to all the candidates and viewers that came out tonight. This concludes tonight's candidate forum. The forum was recorded and will be posted on Facebook and the Silicon Valley Home website and YouTube. So please check in if you missed any part or want to check back to see what any of tonight's wonderful candidates spoke on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.